Test, test. Make sure that you speak right clearly into the mic just like this. Okay, that way we can hear you and they can hear you over the internets. Good afternoon. Welcome and thank you for coming here today. Today, the Syracuse City Redistricting Commission is proud and honored to present our draft map of the new common council districts for the city of Syracuse. And once again, I'll have to remind everyone to please, if you want to speak, you'll have to come up to the microphone so that our colleagues who are on screen can hear everything. This marks the biggest milestone so far in a process that began in 2019, when the voters of Syracuse approved an independent commission to draw the new district boundaries following the 2020 census. And I say independent commission lightly because this commission is dependent on your input in order for us to finesse these districts. So we really want your input when it comes to this. The Syracuse City Redistricting Commission was formed in the summer of 2021, and we are entirely consisted of citizen volunteers. We have met regularly over the last nine months, and I've had public listening sessions in each of the five districts to gather input from the community before starting work on the map that we're presenting to you today. The commission's work was guided by several things. One of them is that we have to go through census data, legal requirements coming from federal, state, and city laws, and the commission's priority based on the public's listening sessions. Not a single line of those draft maps were drawn before we listened to what the citizens had to say to us. We learned from various people in various communities in this city about their needs and preferences. The most important requirement is, and the legal requirement for a new common council map is that the five districts have the same number of people in them. So you can imagine how hard that just kind of made our job in trying to figure all that out. The difference between the largest and smallest cannot be more than about 1,500 people, which is 5% of the ideal population of a district. The districts must also be of a single connected piece and must be of compact shapes. They must also abide by the Voting Rights Act. Finally, the commission is not allowed to favor one political party or candidate over another or to take into account the residence of any current or future candidate.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We need you guys. We need you. I'm gonna switch this around a little bit, um, just because I do that. Okay, um, this round of meetings is gonna be an opportunity. We have five rounds, five additional rounds. And these rounds are gonna be an opportunity to continue the dialogue and the discussion on the best possible map. If you look around the room, and I'm sure you have, I've seen you walk around. You've seen the draft map, you've seen the previous map over there. And then we have also this population of changes on the current map. We really want you to take some time and to look at this stuff and to see exactly the hard work that went into this and what we did in the meetings we had and the thought we had and the discussion that we had. So it's not something that we did lightly. We really discussed it and we cared about it. We understand that there's gonna be folks new to each session, as folks continue to come in. And we want you to know that you're welcome at any time you come in and to ask questions and to be assured that we will do our best to hear your feedback and to also to listen to what you say. But we did have priorities, okay? We did have priorities for this draft map. And it was based on public feedback and extensive discussion within the commission. One of the things that we talked about and discussed and we realized that we had to do was come up with the creation of a black majority district, and that's gonna be District A in the draft map. District A in the draft map. That's the pink in the draft map, okay? And while it's not required by the Voting Rights Act to have this, we decided that the creation of such a district would be beneficial, specifically to the citizens of this district as well as any common counselors who are running for election in the future who would represent the needs of such a district. We wanted to keep the neighborhoods whole, okay? And grouping similar neighborhoods together as often and as much as possible. We heard many comments from different, um, public persons at different listening sessions about neighborhoods being divided from parks to streets, and we really listened to that. And we tried to be as... Well, we tried to do a good job. We tried to do the best we could. Then there's the communities of interest. And a community of interest is a population that lives near each other and shares social or economic interests. This means that whenever or wherever possible, they should not be divided into separate districts because this would make their ability to have their voices heard lessened, okay? Whenever possible, the commission attempted to keep communities of interest intact based on their understanding of what these were across the entirety of the whole city. We had also taken into account the removal of I-81. Yeah, we know that's not gonna happen for a while. And we also consider the demographics of that particular area. However, we know that with the completion of I-81 and the changes it will bring to those communities not too far in the future, the commission looked at that and determined that it would focus its draft map on the current status of this area. And then we also looked at resources in the districts, and those resources could be anything from grocery stores, parks, transportation, anything that are included in the same district as the communities that use them. And this would allow each common counselor to advocate for the services for their constituents. So we also contracted with the Benjamin Center at SUNY New Paltz. Mr. Jeffrey Rice, represent him up there in the upper right-hand corner. And of the New York Census and Redistricting Institute, we looked at him for an illegal logistical and data analysis assistance. They have drawn on decades of experience in redistricting, and they used that to advise us. And with them at the helm, and with our help, and with their help, we were able to draw this draft map. The floor is now yours. I hope you have an opportunity, if you want, to... Should we give a couple more minutes to let the newcomers look at the maps? The newcomers who just came, please take a minute and look at the maps. I'm looking at my old hairdresser and her sister to go look at a map. We got it there, buddy. That being said, the mic is open. I'm your timekeeper. And so if I think that you're a little long, I'll do like this. And that'll let you know that you gotta move it along.
Hi, my name is Patty. I live in the first district. For 16 years, we have had no counselor representing us. They did nothing. We finally got a counselor that listens to us and that is trying to do things for our area. And you have divided us. Our counselor will no longer be our counselor. We voted for her. She's the first woman in our district. We're furious. We have gotten no one to pay attention to us. And now we have someone. We voted. No one cares. Are they gonna allow us to vote again? This is terrible. We are the forgotten North Side. They are adding half of our district to Eastwood that has nothing to do with the North Side. Nothing. But that's a good idea. All the way up to Salt Springs, which is up near Lemoine College. Who does these things? Did any of these people that ran in their districts realize that in not even six months, they weren't gonna represent their district anymore? I don't think so. I don't think so. So we'll just go back to another whatever, 16 whatever how many years of having nobody representing us but getting their paycheck for absolutely nothing.
I'll handle this question. As a fellow Northsider, it was something that we also really looked at and considered. A lot of the feedback that we heard from our first round of meetings was that the Washington Square neighborhood was cut from Court Street. And so in the first district, it was overpopulated. It always had to change. We had sliver of Eastwood and then the North Side and Sedgwick. And so to remedy that, we had to cut something from the North Side in order for our population numbers to be whole. In order to include the rest of the North Side, something had to go on that eastern border. And it was a decision that we made that Sedgwick had more in common with Eastwood than it did with some of that new American population of the North Side. So that's where that decision came from. It was never personal. We cannot take any of the counselors' addresses into account. It's not something we were aware of until after. So that was the reasoning for our decision on that. This is one where slated to do redistricting is based on the census. And so we can't take anything into consideration around incumbents or elections. It was just, I understand why it's upsetting. It just... These are all very, very valid points, but we could only work with the data that we had.
I just wanted to address one thing quickly. I just wanted to address one thing quickly. These maps, whatever maps are eventually passed, which, reminder, these are drafts and there may be revisions. Whatever maps are eventually passed by the common council will be used for the next elections. They won't go into effect instantly. They'll be used for the elections in November of '23. So you still have over a year from the time that these are passed to when they would be used in an election. And your common counselor would continue to be your common counselor for that time.
Uh, hello. I'm sorry I came a little late because you want to avoid Brighton Avenue at all costs. It is a disaster and they should just give you warning. Anyway, I'm Gloria Sage and I'm from the Outta Comstock area. And I spoke at the redistricting meeting that was held at Nottingham High School. And I must say, I really like the Plan B District E map. It really puts together people who should be put together. And I really commend you on that, at least that district.
I just want to make one more comment. This draft map is a product of compromise. There were places where we were unable to draw the exact line we might have liked since that would have led to districts that were unbalanced, and we had to keep to that 5% allowed deviation. So this isn't something that we all just made up. It's something that we had to carefully consider the numbers. And you can see that chart over there that goes through the numbers and how each district is divided. There are only five common council districts and 26 distinct neighborhoods, historical neighborhoods in the city of Syracuse, which makes it really difficult with the limits that we have with the five districts to make everybody happy. Somebody is always going to be unhappy with this map. But unfortunately, because of the legal requirements, this is what we've come with. We have the public meetings so that we can listen and we can finesse the map, but only to a certain point because the population has to be the same, about the same in every district with a 5% deviation. I just wanted to put that out there.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Charles Pierce L. I'm a native Syracusean. I was born and raised here. And my concern is, is I heard something yesterday that disturbed me very personally because, you know, Syracuse right now is unacceptable with me being the number one poverty city in the United States. But in saying that, I was more interested in the ITC school that we're taking out of that area and putting it downtown. That school is a historical African-American school coming out of the 15th ward. We had a lot of teachers and principals come out of that school right in the heart of the 15th ward. And I was trying to find where you took it off on the map and going to put it into another district. So maybe some of you commissioners can help me with that as far as what district is supposed to be going downtown, I heard, from the previous place where it's at. And it's very disappointing because we're allowing 40% of the suburban schools to come into that school district and teach and take away 40% of our people that normally goes to that school. But yet, our people are not available to go to their district in the suburbs for 40% when we're allowing 40% of theirs to come into our city and be in bus. So I need someone to address those issues for me, please.
If you look at the maps around there, the dividing line between A and B on the north edge of District A, the horizontal line, that's Adams Street. And I've got up here the computer version. You can see that ITC is south of Adams Street. And so it is in A.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to mention one more thing. The street that I live on, I was born on, it is considered Lower Sedgwick. Everybody forgets that. That's on a map. We are part of Sedgwick. You went down Oak Street. One side of Oak Street is the new district. One side of Oak Street is the new district. The map looks like it's half on Oak and half on... Okay. You are hurting people that have lived there all their lives. My grandparents were refugees. They came from Germany. They came from Ireland. You're hurting the old refugees for the new refugees. The North Side has been a dumping ground for a long time. Well, it is. There's a lot of good people that have been moved in there, but there's a lot of people that they're there and nobody does anything about.
One of the things that we're well aware of and one of the things that we really attempted to do was be really clear and talk a lot about this. We know. We know that everyone is not gonna be happy. We're aware of this and we're willing to take it. But you know, there's a way to talk to people. There's a way to be respectful. We did it because we had federal law, we had city law, and we had state law. We had to go by that. We had to go by that in the numbers. This was not done arbitrarily to hurt any neighborhood. We did not even think of that. We thought of what the law said for us to do. As you are well aware, in other areas, there are suits being done because of this. We don't want to be that area. We went by the law. So we thank you.
I just want to be very, very brief. I just want to be very, very brief. I was not planning to speak, but... Just very, very briefly, because I don't think it's gotten enough credit. The District C, the creation of this distinct North Side district, I think is a fantastic accomplishment of this commission in this redistricting, both at the county level, that was one of the actual positives that came from county redistricting, and now at the city level. If this map is to go through, there are going to be two completely distinct new American North Side districts at the county and city level for the new American community to really elevate their voice. And it's a very distinct community from, you know, neighboring Sedgwick. So I think this is a great accomplishment of this map, and I just wanted to make sure that that was recognized just because I haven't heard many people addressing that. So, thank you.
Hey, my name is Mary. Can everybody hear me? I lived on Valley Drive. I do live on Valley Drive. Sorry, didn't live. And my question is, as the black voice becomes stronger in our politics in Syracuse, I am very grateful for that. But what happens when we lose the rich white people up in Strathmore from our power as a district? That's my question. They get plowed first. They have a lot of poll. They have the old money. They have the nice houses. What happens to us? Do we lose power? Just want to know.
Excuse me, but my response to that is not just worry about Strathmore, Winkworth to Wildsworth, but we need to worry about the whole city as a whole, uplifting the whole damn city. Okay, because our problem being is we isolate one side. We want to uplift the other side like West Scott and all the other areas. But then when it comes to the South Side, we want to treat them like we're secondhand people. Okay, so that's a problem. It's been an ongoing problem. I ran for third district common council, and the issues are, why can't we make it all the same? Now, the city of Syracuse cried for guns and all this other stuff. But at the same time, when they get the money, they don't put it in the communities that need it. Okay, don't tell me about how they didn't move the money to the North Side when it was supposed to go for South Ave and that. Not South Ave, but South Salina Street. They sat on that money until we didn't notice it, and then they moved it. Okay, so when we do these kind of things, we need to be more vigilant of what's happening in this city. Okay, because where the South Side is treated like we're trash, and I'm tired of it. Okay, so Winkworth, Wild, I praise you. I honor you. But we need to do the same for the whole city, not just certain sections.
Uh, my name is Tony Tobert. And as a member of this commission, it is my responsibility to say to you that this commission worked very, very diligently on making sure that we honored what people said to us in the first round of hearings along with what Melody has already said, the laws and the priorities that we outlined. And so that is what we're sharing with you today. We're not necessarily saying that this is the map that will be shared with the common council for their vote. We're gonna take everything that we hear from you during these rounds of hearings, and we're gonna make whatever adjustments we can possibly make to the map. That's the map that we'll go forward. Having said that, we also want you to know that we're hoping to be able to make some recommendations to the common council regarding the challenge with attending to only five districts and 26 neighborhoods. That is a huge challenge that will not go away for the next round of the commission. So we want the common council and the city to reexamine the charter that says that we must have five common council districts. So that is something that we're working on, and we're trying to figure out how we're gonna attend to that and how we're gonna do that in a way that helps the city of Syracuse, the entire city of Syracuse.
How many districts do you envision as serving our needs?
To the city of Syracuse as a whole. Now, we talk about the South Side as it's a bigger piece of land that we can't identify. Because one day I was playing and cleaning up my side of the street, and the boy was breaking glass. And I said, "Young man, why you breaking the glass?" He said, "Well, I ain't got nothing else to do." So he broke the glass. I said, "Why don't you go home in your own neighborhood and do that?" He said, "I am in my neighborhood." I said, "Where's that at?" He said, "The South Side." And I had to go in the house and think about this for a minute before I ran for third district common council. He's right. So why don't we break this up into like Wildsworth community, Kirk Park community, uh, other communities instead of just calling the South Side? Because when things go wrong, we identify South Side. But nobody can really say, "What is the South Side?" I, in my vision, is along the highway up to Seneca Turnpike, back down South Ave. Okay, and that's a big district. Okay, so why don't we identify areas and let the people identify and embrace the ability to have their own community? And then they can, if I know the boundaries of it, I can enhance it. I can advocate for it. But when you say the South Side, that's a big district to advocate for, and you don't have control over.
Looking at the time, everybody. It's now 6:02 according to me, but that may be closer to 6:05. We're out of here at 6:30. So if you have something you want to share and add, please do so. But I'm gonna suggest this, that when you come up to the mic, if you look at the map and you have some suggestions for it, why don't you share those suggestions with us? We can talk about it. We can talk about what you don't like about it, how it moved the neighborhood, what it did. Give us some suggestions. We listen to you. That is what it's here for. This map was drawn because we listened to those people that came to the first five sessions. So now we're on the second five. Tell us something, everybody.
My name's Tony Dickens. You guys hear me now? My name's Tony Dickens. I grew up in the city of Syracuse. I'm 30 years. I've never lived anywhere else besides here. I grew up what you would consider in District D initially. Then I moved to District E and grew up my adolescent life there. And now I own property in District C, District D, and District B as well. Personally, I think that the zoning of District E is a little irresponsible for a few reasons. First and foremost, the South Side border of District E is Highway 81. And we all know the historical significance of separating Syracuse by 81. Hello everybody. So I grew up in Syracuse native. My name is Tony Dickens. You guys hear me now? My name is Tony Dickens. I grew up in the city of Syracuse. I ' m thirty years. I ' ve never lived anywhere else besides here. Um, I grew up what you would consider in District D initially. Then I moved to District E and grew up my adolescent life there. And now I own property in District C, District D and District B as well. Um, personally, I think that the zoning of District E is a little irresponsible for a few reasons. Uh, first and foremost, the South Side border of District E is Highway eighty one. And we all know the historical significance of separating Syracuse by eighty one and destroying the fifteenth ward and things like that where there was a prevalent black community thriving by itself. Um, I think that ' s problematic. And additionally, I also see that on the Northeast border, it ' s also problematic because I grew up right there in that area, um, Ellison Crowley Street. And, you know, you split it up right where you would consider it to be a bad neighborhood, right where we consider to be a good neighborhood. So I ' m not sure if this is in consideration of the socioeconomic factors that would, you know, classify these people differently. If you were to look up the median income in District E, I ' m sure that it ' s going to be a lot higher than other districts and as we know, with with income, with wealth comes power and representation and ways to change the community that you don ' t really have when you ' re in poverty. So I think there needs to be a little bit more consideration when taken into the the zoning of that particular district. Um, I don ' t I ' m not a not an expert at this stuff. And and I ' ll give you a little I ' ll give you a little background. I ' ve I, yeah, I ' ll tell you, I ' ll give you a little background because I I I ' ve I ' ve been researching this for all of two weeks, let ' s call it, and immersed myself with it today. And I I never went to one of your meetings. I ' ve never came and talked like this, but this empowered me to come today and share how I feel because I grew up in this neighborhood. I love District E neighborhood. It ' s a beautiful neighborhood. And I saw it when it was just a okay neighborhood and it became a beautiful neighborhood. When they, the Eschewa pavilions and the the horses that you want to call it, how they beautified Berry Park and they dumped money into the university, which again, I can ' t say doesn ' t deserve the money, but I think that if you take that down a few more blocks, then we ' re able to build up a few more blocks to the south or a few more blocks to the east, we ' re able to build a few more blocks to the east. So, I understand you guys did the best job that you could do in regards to getting the numbers right, but I don ' t think the numbers are right because you ' re not looking at the right numbers in my opinion. Um, that ' s just my personal perspective on it, and I wish everybody luck, but I don ' t.
Test, test.
Hello everybody, my name is Kenesha Miller. I grew up on the uh West Scott neighborhood on the east side, uh as well as the sort of outer Comstock area. Um, my question is for you Anthony, I I would like to better understand where you think um the east side or outer Comstock ends and where the south side begins, because I do think some of these, um, some of the, it seems like of town into a district. So the west side, I guess is our own district, the north side, I guess is our own district, the east side, the south side. But some of the the lines, it takes part of one neighborhood and then part of another neighborhood. So I guess from your perspective as somebody who who grew up, you know, in between A E D or A and E, right? Could could you could you maybe describe a little bit where you think the south side starts and where Outer Comstock ends?
I I think I ' m just conditioned to believe that the South Side starts where the highway starts, and that ' s not because that ' s where it should start. That ' s literally redlined into the city ' s history that they put that there for a particular reason. I don ' t have to say it on the mic, we all know why they made the highway there and they put the neighborhood there. And again, it ' s it ' s just irresponsible to consider that we ' re going to do that again with the expectation that people on this side have to dig themselves out of poverty by theirself when people on this side have already had the advantage to do that. So, I think we have a better opportunity here when redistricting to lean on our neighbors, to be able to empower uh empower each other to do better. Um, I know that this young lady over here who does live in District E, I don ' t know where where she went, but she mentioned that she loved the way the districts were were zoned and I could imagine if I still lived there, I probably would too, you know? Like again, this is all the greatest neighborhoods in Syracuse that are all bunched in one district where we do have the opportunity again to maybe move them over to other districts where we have a little more power.
Well, one one more question, and then um do you do you have any thoughts or ideas on uh Strathmore being included with the South Side or does anyone have any thoughts or ideas as uh because because right now it ' s grouped in with with District B, which I would consider the West Side, Strathmore is. So do we do we do we think of that neighborhood as as being part of the West Side or do you think of that being So if you have any, If you have ideas uh as to where one neighborhood starts and stops, I think that would be very helpful for for the committee to to hear. So if y ' all would want to share that. No one ' s more of an expert than than you all. Um, thank you very much. If you could direct your attention over here to our projector, we just want to do a a little demonstration for you on just exactly what we ' re up against, um, in terms of balancing not just our priority is absolutely the neighborhoods and keeping neighborhoods together. However, we ' re bound by certain laws that require compactness in a district as well as population. And so we ' ll show you the domino effect of what happens when we move a neighborhood into another district. So Graham, we ' re we ' re right on Strathmore. Yeah. So let ' s move Strathmore into the South Side a little. Currently, Strathmore is in District B. It ' s grouped with Tipp Hill and the West Side and a little bit of downtown. I somewhat, yeah. That the problem I think we came up against with that concept is that the center has the least population. So you ' re cutting into all of the the communities that are on the outskirts. You ' re cutting them right in half.
This is Strathmore. This is down at the southwest side of town. You see on the right there, you see District A, that ' s the pink. You see the district sort of purple on the computer, it ' s purple, on the printouts, it ' s blue. And what I ' ve got highlighted here is Strathmore, and I don ' t know if you folks over there can see, it ' s pretty small, I know. But right now, this pink has twenty nine thousand eight hundred people in it. Has twenty nine thousand five hundred people in it. They ' re really close. Okay. And that of course has to do with the rest of the the borders as well, not just this little part. But if we take this part and make it pink, The blue is now twenty eight five. It ' s now fifteen hundred people less than it used to be. And the pink is fifteen hundred people more than it used to be. And now they ' re out of balance. They ' re outside the legal requirement. Fifteen hundred is our limit for the between the biggest and the smallest. Yes, absolutely. We can. We. That can absolutely happen. It continues all around the map. And we have done this repeatedly. We so we started with wanting the majority, majority district District A. We started with wanting some obvious dividing lines to be dividing lines. For example, For example, we wanted this part of, I don ' t know what the name of that street is. It ' s just a highway. To use the highway as a dividing line up here. But so now we ' ve got to go find more for District B because it ' s lost fifteen hundred people. So either we go across this convenient dividing line here, or we, as some folks some folks had suggested, go across eighty one as a dividing line. Now, to address that point, this was something that Melody hinted at, but I want to say it a little more. We decided not to look into the future, not to try to predict what effect eighty one coming down is going to have on the population. We talked about it for hours. We discussed it with experts. We we asked, what can we reasonably expect? And we couldn ' t get an answer that was firm enough for us to draw a line that made any sense to us. And so what we decided to do was to draw a map that uses the highway as it is today and not try to look in the future. This process is supposed to happen every ten years. They skipped twenty ten. So it ' s been twenty years since it was last done. But going forward, it is supposed to happen every ten years. And so by twenty thirty, the next census, knock on wood, eighty one will be down. It will be rebuilt. It will be different. There will be different population there, and that will be the moment.
use the twenty twenty census data. And because we don ' t have the data for what eighty was gonna look like, we couldn ' t base map on that. We long says we have the twenty twenty census data to
which which you that is eighty one a really true a uh drawing line, whether you could go across it or not, do that make a difference if you went across it? Uh I mean, why why not go across it and draw that fifteen hundred from somewhere else and try to balance it out? Why just use eighty one? Because like the young man said, we ' ve been using eighty one as a dividing line all this time. We need to get rid of that concept. Okay, and let ' s try something else. And if we have to go over it, then go over it.
know, if you have problem, I ' m switching it. Okay. I ' m sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. I know you said that it was hard to move the um line either left eighty one we ' ll call it, just not on eighty one. What I was just asking, since they uh said that, you know, it was not possible to move the eighty one line again farther east or west, we ' ll call it, what kind of challenges is it with moving that particular line? Uh, and I mean, obviously I ' m asking a sincere question because I know it ' s population and things like that and demographics apparently. But what was the the whole like, did somebody say we eighty one or?
Thank you. It ' s a really good question. So there were two things. One is that part of the advice we got from people who have done redistricting before, and this is why we we contracted with some people who ' ve got decades doing this, is to use major existing things in the city as lines. Like for example, Erie Boulevard would be a great place to draw the line. It ' s a major existing dividing point between populations. And eighty one fits that. Now, that doesn ' t mean it has to be. It just means it fits. The other thing is, whoops it ' s not very clear. Uh, one of our priorities was to have a majority black district. And and Melody talked about the reasons for this. If you ' re going to do that, you ' d have to look at where the African- American population in the city is. And so this was, we had a report commissioned to show us where are the most densely African- American parts of the city. And I ' ve I ' ve zoomed in too far here, but uh this dark green is higher uh density of African- American population. And you ' re absolutely right. It follows the highway. And we know that there are historical reasons for this that we are not trying to fix. We we don ' t have power to fix those. But if we want to capture a majority African- American district, we look at where the boundaries of that neighborhood are, and we capture those. And it is because of historical stuff that ' s honestly terrible. But we have to draw the maps as people live today and also keep working to have next ti next iterations maps be able to be drawn in a better way because people are living in in a better way.
Sure, because I ' m looking at time and and after this, thank you. And after this young lady speaks right here, okay, I ' ll hold. Uh, I want, okay, I wanted to answer one question about where the South Side begins from out of Comstock. You go down one seventy three going west and you see Welcome to the Valley. There is no connection between the valley and and Out of Comstock, none. There ' s the the rail line, there ' s eighty one, there ' s a big hill. So it ' s very separate. And I mentioned it my last hearing, but there ' s a different group of people. Where do you want your districts? You want to be with people who shop in the same areas, who have schools in the same areas, who have parks in the same areas, who have who use streets in the same areas so they have a certain commonality as far as getting their representatives to do what they want. I want to also mention a historical thing that people have have confused. A while ago, they had a map, started from nineteen various districts and they had various things. The fifteenth ward was considered Jewish, right to the north of it was Black. That was the nineteen ninety map. Don ' t forget Route eighty one started in the late fifties. So you would say, how was things at that period of time? Unfortunately, the city has raised a lot of parts in the east side and they allowed of putting that uh was uh oh a house project. That ' s all right. Okay, but then the fifteenth ward had three large synagogues. Three large synagogues. And uh it was essentially a Jew. That was to be a black name. This is what it was in fifty. Terrible. We know what Earp Rehne did. We don ' t have to go through all that. Okay, so now, um, I, we only got a few minutes, but I ' d like to give our mayor two minutes to come up and just give us his thoughts on this. I know people are going to jump you afterwards. But just want to hear your thoughts, Mayor.
I just wanted to say it ' s all my fault. Uh, no, I actually I just came to say thank you. Um, as evidenced in the in the short time that I ' ve been here, um, this is largely thank thankless work, uh, to the committee, and I just want to be one to say thank you. Uh, right. This is incredibly difficult and it ' s easy to say, what if this or what about that, but everyone in in your feedback is incredibly important and valuable, but always try to reorient yourselves back to what are the parameters around which this committee work. They ' re they ' re fairly stringent. Um, only five districts, uh, population has to be equal, uh, predominantly uh black district. There there ' s only so many lines you can move. Um, it doesn ' t mean that this is the perfect map. I I I will say I I was very impressed by it. I think you I think uh it ' s it ' s very good, but there are there are pros and cons and there ' s going to be no perfect map. But I really, I just want to say thank you to the to the committee for the incredible work and not only the work, but the enthusiasm that you all have brought to this work. Uh, we are a national model for how redistricting should be done, as as painful and as awkward and ugly and complicated as it is. This is democracy, right? This is the sausage making. Um, but it ' s the right way to be I just wanted to say it ' s all my fault. Uh, no, I actually I just came to say thank you. Um, as evidenced in the in the short time that I ' ve been here, um, this is largely thank thankless work uh to the committee, and I just want to be one to say thank you. Uh, right. This is incredibly difficult and it ' s easy to say, what if this or what about that? But everyone in in your feedback is incredibly important and valuable, but always try to reorient yourselves back to what are the parameters around which this committee work. They ' re they ' re fairly stringent. Um, only five districts, uh, population has to be equal, uh predominantly uh black district. There there ' s only so many lines you can move. Um, it doesn ' t mean that this is the perfect map. I I I will say I I was very impressed by it. I think you I think uh it ' s it ' s very good, but there are there are pros and cons and there ' s going to be no perfect map. But I really, I just want to say thank you to the to the committee for the incredible work and not only the work, but the enthusiasm that you all have brought to this work. Uh, we are a national model for how redistricting should be done, as as painful and as awkward and ugly and complicated as it is. This is democracy, right? This is the sausage making. Um, but it ' s the right way to be done. So thank you all and thank you all for showing up. Um, as it As you heard, the the committee used the the feedback that they received uh in the first series of meetings to get to this point, and now they ' re going to use the feedback they ' re receiving now and going forward, um, to inform the next part of the process. So this is how it ' s supposed to work. Again, thank you all so much. And uh, I will give back whatever time I have remaining. There you go.
You got more things to do. So yeah. Okay, so now we ' re winding it up. It ' s like six uh six twenty seven. Yes, I ' m sorry. Okay.
Thanks. So Babette wanted me to say one thing about uh census blocks. So you you saw when I don ' t know if you saw when I was repainting one of the districts, I had to do a little chunk and then another little chunk and another little chunk. Those are census blocks. Those are set by the U S Census as part of every ten years the census. We don ' t control those. But that ' s what we get to use to draw the lines. We don ' t get to break up a census block when we draw our lines. Also, they draw the census blocks where the roads are, and they draw them down the middle of the roads. And that means that on the two sides of a road, you might have two different census blocks, and that means that on the two sides of a road, you might have different districts, and we can ' t do anything about it. So, for example, one of the the lines that people have asked about is uh this dividing line, whoops, oh no, I painted a bunch of districts. Oh, oh, it ' s crude. Uh, geez. Uh, folks have have uh mentioned, I can ' t do this. This dividing line between C and D, the the vertical bit here, it matter. I ' m And folks who live on the other side of DeWitt Street would be in District C. And well, some people might or might not. It might not matter to a bunch of folks. It might really matter to some folks, but it ' s an unavoidable part of how the laws say we have to draw the map.
I just want to add another, I just want to add one other piece too. If you look at the maps, there are affluent neighborhoods with low income neighborhoods in every single district and there was no way to avoid that. So you have part of Valley and District A um with with you know, part of the the um, some of the poorest neighborhoods in the South Side, and we have so Strathmore now in District B with parts of the Near West Side. So when you look at the maps, you ' re going to see that. So it ' s not like we put all the rich districts together with no low income districts. If you look at these maps, there ' s a distribution of wealth in all of the districts. Just want to add one more thing. Guess what? There ' s going to be a meeting coming up on other, but a young about that for a minute. Because we have thirty.
Thanks, guys. For those of you who do not know who I am, my name is Heather Cogan. I was actually brought in and asked to help Common Cause New York um do a little bit of education with the city of Syracuse concerning redistricting. Um, a little bit of background real quickly. I have done a couple different censuses. I ' ve also worked on several campaigns over the last few years and I have probably walked every street in the city at least one time, if not multiple times. Um, two quick things about that. My favorite parts of the city and I have I have no shame in this are the North Side and the South Side. So my um workshops will for now, the two that I have scheduled are going to be on the North Side and South Side. One at the White Branch Library on Thursday afternoon and one next Tuesday at the Southwest Community Center. Um, and I put, yeah, she ' s got them right over here, these little quarter sheets. And the brown, it has my workshops as well as my email is on there. If you guys have any questions, um, you can email me. I have a bunch of information I can email you. And it also has all of the hearing dates, times, and locations for the hear the next few hearings for this cycle. Okay. Yes, I have a whole Power Point presentation for y ' all. But but the fun part really is I did draw I live in Eastwood right now currently, and I did draw my map. And it was really, really nice to see um some of my questions come to life after I drew my my maps because you can go and click right on that census data and see um how it correlates to the maps.
Well, thank you. We thank you for coming today for sharing your insight. Please, if you have any. Wait a minute. I mean, I gotta end it. Okay, so uh, yeah, but if you would, please, uh, yeah, but no collapse. Just, you know, if you got any ideas, the commissioner is here. We ' ll be here like for like three minutes, three seconds, thirty seconds. And if you wanna, huh? And tomorrow there ' s a meeting tomorrow. And where is it gonna be? I ' m sorry, because I ' m not gonna be there. It ' s gonna be a faller. Okay. So please come to that one. Bring a friend, bring people to share. Okay. It ' s on Mcknowya Street. It ' s on the west side of Gettys and Mcknowya. Oh, yes, they do. said people can actually go on our site and they can play with the lines themselves.